September, October, time is six thirty. Local.
And Tori?
Uh, here.
Raymond Mas?
Here.
I need.
Here.
Van Euro?
Here.
Sharon Lee?
Here.
Vincent Light?
Here.
Paul Cagnon?
Here.
Anna Cruz?
Yeah.
Amanda Cabitano?
Here.
Eugene Horowitz, absent, Chris Havens.
Advocate witness in this meeting has been post of Borough Hall, filed with the Borough Clerk, the Mail, to the Asbury Park Press, The River Times, and The Star Legend. Meeting is being taped, recorded, and in event the applicant uses service of the poor reporter to transcribe the tapes, or files a copy of the transcript. Break about eight P M. Your only British testimony heard thus far, copying my first floor. Look at somebody in ten, however, discussion between board members and public is not permitted at that time. Those new cases will be heard after nine P M. The Red Bank zoning board of the Jefferson has maintained a policy cutoff hour of nine thirty P M. for its hearings. And the avenue gets not heard this evening will be carried over to the next scheduled meeting. Um, pledge allegiance.
Attention, citizens of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and the liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a couple administrative matters. We have a meeting minutes from about thirteen. But I'd like to move out.
Move those.
I'll second.
And Tori?
Yes.
Raymond Mas?
Yes.
Elaine Hogan?
Yes.
Van Euro?
Yes.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
Vincent Light?
Yes.
And Paul Cagnon?
Okay, we have a resolution of approval on sixty and which brings Rose.
Mister Chairman, this was the Jersey Central Power and Light application from the last meeting. It's a pretty long resolution. It was submitted ahead of time. This is a resolution memorializing the conditional approval. And Ben Jimin Nadel, the applicant's attorney, is here tonight. Um, and there is some technical information missing in the resolution, and he was good enough to provide that for me. And what we're gonna do is, uh, there's some landscaping, uh, conditions, and one of those conditions, it was about landscaping around the park benches. Because that's in a, uh, land or area that is presumably restricted by green acres, uh, regulations. I think we're just gonna clarify that to say uh, that they make a good faith to put that, uh, green acres, uh, I mean, to put that landscaping around the benches, should the green acre regulations so allow. And, uh, I think there was, at one point, you recall that there was a pretty intense agreement here about working out a potential title issue with the town. And I had, um, said nine months in one part, and then later on I said ninety days. So we'll just clarify that that's a nine month, uh, period. And, um, there is, uh, extensive whole harmless provision. Um, and, uh, that, I think I just had the resolution being signed, but we'll just have it that we have a whole, like, uh, a letter to the effect. And, um, if this is acceptable to the board members, we can adopt that as modified and subject to engineering review, if that's the pleasure of the board.
Thank you, Kevin, for that. Uh, and take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Oh, and we also have, um, my friend Anne, um, clarified and the correct spelling of, of some of the landscaping details, so I thank her for that, but we'll, we'll change it, subject to that change as well.
And Tori?
Yes.
Raymond Mas?
Yes.
Elaine Hogan?
Yes.
Van Euro?
Yes.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
Vincent Light?
Yes.
Paul Cagnon?
Yes.
Okay, we have new business, Nine Wharf Avenue. Please come forward.
Okay, and Mister Chairman, as the applicant team comes forward, we just have a couple of preliminary procedural things to do. First up, we will swear in, uh, Shawna Ebanks, our Director of Community Development, and Jacqueline Durman, our Board Engineer. Uh, Shawna and Jacqueline, do, if you could just raise your right hands, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you, God?
I do.
All right, let the record reflect that both, uh, witnesses have been sworn. Um, is there anyone here who had any questions or comments or concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice that they received for tonight's hearing? We don't see any. Uh, and let the record, uh, reflect that, uh, the Board Secretary and Shawna and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order, so it would be my humble opinion that we have jurisdiction to proceed tonight. And just for the record, we will mark into the record what we as a board have before us. For example, let's, uh, start first with, we're going to have, uh, A one is going to be the Borough Red Bank Department of Planning and Zoning Application. Uh, A two is going to be the Red Bank Denial Letter dated April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. A three is going to be the tax certificate certification dated July eighth, two thousand twenty-four. A four is going to be the Historic Preservation Commission Application, and we're gonna come back to that in a moment. A five is the Disclosure of Ownership Form. A six is the survey prepared by Charles Sermont, and that's dated June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. A seven is the Architectural Alteration Addition Plans prepared by, uh, Mode Architects dated July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. A eight is the Architectural Plans prepared by Mode Architects dated June twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-four, consisting of five sheets. A nine is the Addition Plan prepared by A, uh, Carolyn Fegan of A R H Associates, dated July first, two thousand twenty-four, consisting of two sheets. And we're gonna mark as A ten, um, the T and M Associates Review Memorandum dated October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. And, uh, one last thing, uh, reviewing the documents, it looks like the applicant here is Nine Wharf J D S L L C. It looks like the sole principal is Jeremy Suarez, so just for our own internal conflict check, is there anyone here who has any questions or comments about conflicts now that we hear the name Jerry, Jeremy Suarez? Okay, seeing none, uh, this is Dante Alfieri, and, um, after he makes an appearance, just gonna ask Shawna one question, but we'll, we'll get, we'll get you going.
Uh, please, you need to speak in of it. I, they're pretty bad, so.
Very close.
Okay. Close, okay. Yeah.
Good evening, Chairman, Members of the Board, Dante Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant.
Perfect. And just, uh, Shawna, um, Board Member Paul Cagnon, I just, uh, asked, um, we know this is an H B, or Historic Preservation Commission Application. Do we get a response? Do they come here?
That's why I included it in the app.
Oh, okay. So the, 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 the actual application is, concludes a response? Okay, very good. Okay, so we'll get into that, uh, in a little bit. Thank you.
Uh, so tonight you're here seeking the board's approval. Uh, the property address is Nine Wharf Avenue, it's block nine oh one, lots twenty-three point oh one. Again, now in Nine Wharf, it's a P G M's LLC. Zone is C C D two. Um, it's an existing structure. It's a three-story structure. There is an existing retail commercial space in the first floor, um, and then residential above. We're proposing to, uh, put in addition up to the top to, like, three residential, so there'd be three floors of residential, one unit in each, and then keep the main, the center as commercial. I have three individuals who are gonna provide testimony tonight, an engineer, our architect, and our planner. Uh, so how further do you all have our engineer come up and, uh, describe the site? You don't have to, but it's. I don't necessarily need it, I just wanna have it.
All right, if you could just state your, uh, name and business address, please?
Uh, my name is Christopher Morris, uh, ninety-seven Apple Street, in Paul.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the Red Bank Zoning Board. If you could just raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
And just for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed engineer?
Uh, yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state.
Thank you.
Please provide your qualifications for the board?
Uh, sure, I'm a, a senior, uh, project engineer at A R H Associates. I have a bachelor's degree from Georgia Tech, a master's degree in civil engineering from N J I T. I have just over twelve years' experience in site civil engineering and land development, where I've prepared and designed several site plans for commercial and residential properties, and so I just like to subject that application. I've, um, I have not appeared in front of this board, but I have prepared a professional engineering testimony in front of several boards in the state of New Jersey and Mammoth and Ocean Hills.
Very good, thank you. Uh, so, Chris, if you could please describe the, the site for the board and just, uh, go through what we.
Uh, sure, um, site is, uh, point zero six eight acres and, uh, about twenty-eight point nine eight feet on Wharf Ave. Um, it's a mixed-use building, uh, with ground for commercial, just formerly the, uh, Tate Gallery, and, uh, residential units on the second and third floor. Uh, the applicant is seeking preliminary and final major cycle and approval to construct a fourth-story residential unit and other renovations to the building. Uh, the existing site has underlined, delineated parking in the rear that is accessed via Oakley Lane off of Union Street. Um, this site has an existing parking deficiency, um, with the, the mixed-use commercial and, uh, residential component. It requires nine parking spaces. Uh, with the additional residential unit on the fourth floor, that requires two more spaces for a total of eleven. Um, the proposed development will maintain the three spaces in the rear, and we're gonna provide striping and, uh, identification, uh, signage, uh, to limit, to reserve those parking spaces for the tenants of the property. The, the parking deficiency, um, will be handled through, uh, public parking uh, within a four-hundred-foot radius of the site. There's ample on-street parking on Union Street, on Wharf Ave, and on, uh, East Front Street. Uh, there's also the Marine Parking Lot. There's also, uh, two parking garages within the immediate vicinity of the site. Um, during the design phase, we also reviewed putting in a handicap space in the rear of the property. Um, it, it's due to the narrow, that narrowness of the site, it just wasn't feasible to get that to work and maintain these two spots. Um, so, uh, to provide handicap access to the site, we're gonna utilize the, um, handicap spots and inaccessible spots on Union Street and in Marine Pa- Parking Lot, and may provide, uh, clear access to the site. Um, we spoke with the applicant, uh, prior to this, uh, meeting, and she agreed to inquire about obtaining parking permits for the, uh, deficiency in the parking for the residential tenants. Um, we, we agreed to provide those as a condition of any approval tonight. Um, the site is serviced by the Water and Sewer. Uh, at this time, the domestic and sanitary sewer connections are to be changed. There will be a new four-inch, uh, line for sprinkler system that will be installed uh, connected to the main within Wharf Ave. Uh, so we will show that on our revised site plan drawings. Uh, from a drainage standpoint, the site is a hundred percent impervious. Um, it doesn't meet the threshold for which any stormwater contamination would be required. Yeah, existing roof leaders on building, they have to charge for the side of the property and then run down, uh, through the rear, down Oakley Lane and into the infrastructure on Union Street. Uh, our proposed, uh, roof leader system will rema- maintain the same drainage characteristics and not, um, cause any negative impact in the drainage pattern on the property. And again, our, our revised plans will show the location of the downspouts of those roof leader systems. Um, touching on the trash collection, um, trash pickup will be provided by a private hauler. Um, trash cans are gonna be stored within enclosed, uh, refuse area in, in the rear of the property, can hold out to the front for collection. And lastly, just touching on loading and deliveries, with the, uh, commercial component that's currently in place, we do not expect any loading or delivery operations to be prevalent on the site.
Okay, any questions from the board for?
With the parking, the spaces?
You need that, Elaine?
That's, oh, mine's not working. It's, I, it's not working, my mic. Um, with, um, three spaces there for the tenants, and then everybody, I guess to the gallery, gallery, um, the framing place has to find.
Spaces in the rear will be, there'll be one designated spot for each residential unit.
Okay.
Second, third, and fourth floors, which have one spot for the tenants, and then we're trying to obtain a parking permit for the other three residential, uh, spaces that are required for the regulation.
Okay. What, what do you mean by parking permit? I mean, I know what a parking permit is, but what would this give them permission to park in some public area?
In, in the public lots, yes, or in public garage. That, that is the goal of, of the applicant, to ensure that prior, so, so they're not just trying to find, find a designated spot within the vicinity of the site to, um, park.
I'm curious, how did they go about that?
Go ahead.
Never heard of that. Like, it's the first, you know, an applicant to, applicant getting a permit, 'cause you know, other ones have come in, and I've not seen where they got a permit for a, you know, specific space in the area.
I, I, I don't have the details yet on how he is going to secure them. He, he's just inquired about.
Very cool.
That, that's something that he feels is necessary to, um, to provide to the tenants of the property, uh, designated parking.
So it wouldn't necessarily be a designated space, it would be building to utilize a space in the parking lot, so it might be a specific space that's designated to the tenant within the park, but, uh, my client is gonna secure a permit from one of the public, um, parking lots for those tenants, so they have the ability to come in, have a space available. May not be the same space every time, but they'll have the ability to park.
Okay, I just didn't know that was something we did.
For, tell us if these spots are available, how many of those parking permits would be available? Do you need help?
Yeah, I'd have to ask the, um, parking, parking ability.
And this, sorry to dwell on this, but this would be if, uh, what tenant of one of the apartment, one vehicle. As it is, they would have a spot in the back for their, for a single vehicle.
Yeah, just per reg- regulations with the two-bedroom unit, two parking spots are required.
So the, the securing those spaces is an attempt to try to mitigate the, the necessity of the barriers that we are as.
And just for the record, um, the, uh, second floor has how many apartments right now?
There, there's one apartment unit on the second floor, one apartment unit on the third floor.
Okay, and you're proposing this fourth floor, which is gonna have?
One, one additional.
One additional. Thank you.
And all under existing proposed is a, a two-bedroom unit, see that, same amount of parking.
All two bedrooms?
Yes.
Exist, I met of, two bedrooms.
See what you can do with this.
Yes.
How is, how is parking handled today with the two apartments and the one tenant? Do they each have a reserved spot in the back, or is it just?
No, but all the spaces are underliniated and no reserved parking for a- any tenants or, uh, the, the commercial space.
Do you know if today they need to find parking spaces on the street to accommodate their vehicles?
No, no one is currently living there.
Okay. Are you renovating floors two and three also?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
So you need to accommodate the commercial and three floors of apartments, so it's like two units, so six, maybe eight cars? Eight vehicles?
Yeah, so per regulations, eleven spaces will be required under those requirements, whereas nine are required under existing. So that, that fourth-story residential unit will increase the parking demand by two spaces.
And you currently have?
Three floor. Three.
So eleven total for the new build, nine currently existing.
That, those are the requirements, yeah.
Okay. And the request is not to have to add two additional, or it's just not possible, given?
It's not possible due to the size of the site. We have parking expanded throughout the, the entire width of the property.
I've looked into parking authority also for purchasing a site, but from, from my experience, they're all owned by Red Bank, and every time I needed a spot, I've had to pay for parking. It's, it's pretty expensive. I'd be interested to know, I know it's only, someone's initiated the conversation, but whether or not you can even purchase parking spots? I purchase spots for dumpsters all the time, but I'm not allowed to keep them forever, so I'd be interested to know if anyone's actually been successful buying a spot from the borough.
Yeah, there is a mechanism in place. I know that Hackensack Community and Health buys spaces, permits, that park in Marine Park. So there's a mechanism, I just don't know how it works.
I see a public need for that, you know?
Those are for the employees of H M.
Ones are in, in the door office, right?
There's overflow. They've got a lot. Yeah, there's, they buy, I don't know how many permits that take up spaces in Marine Park. But I don't know the mechanism, or if there's a limit.
Per part, there's still a, a spot per unit in the back. Strike, right?
One, one, well, not two spaces for each, just.
Yes, but I, I would assume an apartment like that had one car, even if there's two occupants.
Yeah.
It's in the core, core of downtown.
Well, just the building, original building. I can't answer that.
This is also not an engineering question, but these would be rental apartment sites. And they, you said no one is living there now? They're not rented?
That, that's my understanding.
Okay, any additional questions for? Witness?
I guess just one, just in terms of the, uh, the garbage, is it, uh, are the, the tenants gonna take it out? Uh, you're talking about taking cans out, or is there a management company? And are they gonna bring it back in a timely fashion?
Yes, the tenants would roll out their cans to the part of the property, and then it would be picked up by a private hauler and brought back to the rear.
Can I, Kevin, can I add to that?
Yes, please.
Where would they store it? Where are the cans stored?
And currently are stored in an enclosed area, uh, off the side to the, of the property in the rear.
Okay, so it's not internal, it's?
The rear.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I don't know, can you move on here?
Yes, well, thanks for our, thanks for this.
Chris, go ahead. One more, wait, before I said, any questions from the public for this witness?
Hey, good evening. If you could just state your name and business address, please?
Daniel Zanino, uh, with Mode Architects, six twenty-one Lake Avenue, Asbury Park.
All right, good evening. Good to see you. If you could just raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you, God? Okay, and just for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed architect?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, if you could please provide your qualifications for the board?
I am a licensed architect in New Jersey. I have a bachelor's degree in architecture from N J I T. I've been working in a special field for fifteen years now, and, uh, on projects of this scale and size and use. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Uh, so Dan.
And you know what? Why don't we just mark that, uh, we need what, A eleven?
Yeah.
All right, so A eleven is an illustrated rendering. Is that what we're calling it, Dan?
Yes, it's an exterior rendering.
Uh, and is it prepared by your office?
Yes, it is.
So that's prepared by Mode Architects. Is there a date on it?
Uh, I believe today's date, was that?
Okay, so that's November seventh, got it. So that'd be A eleven.
Dan, can you describe the existing condition and any way to propose additional up there?
Sure, so, um, spoke about it, uh, already, but this is a, uh, existing three-story building. Um, the first floor is a commercial space currently. The second floor is also an existing apartment, two-bedroom. Uh, the third floor is also a two-bedroom apartment. The proposed addition is, uh, to the rear of the building, within the same footprint, but up on the, uh, the third floor, the, the rear is being expanded, and the, uh, the fourth floor is being added for an additional two-bedroom apartment.
I'm sorry, the third floor is being expanded?
Correct, so the, the, the third floor right now doesn't, uh, cover the entire footprint of the building? So the back of that third floor has been bumped out, and then, uh, we're adding the fourth floor on top of that, thank you.
While looking at A eleven, that shows what the proposed condition is?
That is the, uh, the proposed renovation and addition.
Yeah, can I ask a question with that? Was A eleven shown to the H B C? Is that the document?
Uh, this was revised, uh, they taking their comments into consideration.
Okay, so it was not sent back to H B C for them to take a look at?
No, H B C.
Well, the H B C, I'm on the H B C. Um, I wasn't there at that meeting, but it seems somewhat inconsistent with my history on the committee to have, uh, white windows currently existing, right? The frame of the windows? And in your plans that are submitted to the zoning, shows white windows, but the top are black. Was the H B C was comfortable with that?
Uh, the H B C was more concerned about the height and the, 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 uh, the look of that addition. They were concerned that it looked a little too modern, and wanted to step back as of that top floor.
So I, I know when the comment from the H B C has said that they, they thought it was too, uh, contemporary, and it requested that the siding be changed?
Correct.
Right?
On the fourth floor.
But what I'm not getting, I guess, from your plans that are submitted to the zoning board, it shows the existing white-framed windows that would currently exist today, but your drawing shows black-framed windows. So are you planning on changing all of the windows at the building from white to black?
Uh, yes, so.
Okay, that was told to the H B C. I, I just don't have, it just seems very inconsistent with my experience on the H B C to allow a contemporary window on a historic structure.
It's, it's a new window, it's a hella historic window that we're proposing.
Yeah.
The, the, the windows that I believe were on the plans of the H B C saw noted that.
And there was no comment to it? I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the H B C, at the application, it seems that it, it was shown them that the existing windows were gonna stay white. Being the frame of the windows as they currently exist today are white.
I have the, the, the elevation if you would like me to, that out, the H B C.
Um, I have a related question, uh, because the, as I looked at this cock eye, the plans we got are not, do not look like that.
Right.
The plans we got are very, it's a very contemporary.
We got the one that H B C.
Uh, we got the one that H B C rejected.
We don't.
No, it's marked into exhibit, 'cause that's, I say and provide that to us.
No, the, the, H B C did not see this. We went to the H B.
Well, we haven't seen it either.
I guess let's just clear it up. So first, let's talk about. Sorry, sorry. Uh, first, let's talk about the window, so I I'm getting what Mr. Cagnon's saying, it's that, it's just a window. Positional that they prefer the white.
Not that you're gonna have to bring it, uh, the, the chairman of the planning board says you have to be like a rock star. You gotta bring it in and sort of scream, right? Yes, they're in, yes.
Uh, so, what I was stating is that the H B C would prefer white windows opposed to black windows? Is that what you're?
Um, his, historically, yeah, like in the historic district and other historic homes throughout town typically, um, the H B C has. The H B C has referred that they remain that way. That's been my my experience. Like I said, I wasn't at this meeting. I was away. But it seems inconsistent. That's 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 what I'm saying.
I was at the meeting, and yes, the drawings that were presented did depict these brown windows. Your drawing shows black windows, but what you provided to us was brown windows. I don't know if it's the shading was off, but they were.
The foundation around here, we did a different.
Okay.
We, the zoning board, haven't seen architectural plans for this building. We've seen architectural plans for a different style of addition. I I a little put out by that. We, did we get the wrong plans sent last day or this week?
I dropped in.
Am I crazy?
No, this is what we're saying. This is what I have.
I don't have a.
We have not, we have not received revised plans. This is what we're looking at.
Apologize for that. Maybe we can clear it up via testimony.
Yeah.
See if that's sufficient for you, if not.
Yep, but.
And we'll also look into the windows, because we're we're not trying to to change anything. Um, H B C that they did not see, so we'll certainly make sure that that's accurately reflected. Um, so while Dan's making that change, I guess the question would be is looking at what we've presented tonight to what the board actually has seen, are there any structural differences, or is it just the side?
Well, to Paul's point, it is, I mean, you have a faux Mansard type of roof on now instead of like an aluminum clad exterior. But I do have to agree with Paul, because a lot of times, and my personal experience included, you know, there seems to be a bait and switch in the color. And I completely agree with, you know, the colors. I've gone through H B C myself, you know, and to see something very different. It's not just a color scheme. It that Mansard, the faux Mansard on the top, the railings, the windows, the storefront, I I think makes it very different. I agree that structurally it might be the same, but those dormer windows are very different on that third, fourth floor than the just a flat double hung with the aluminum. It is different. It's not just the colors. In my opinion, you know?
I'm just trying to clarify how the structure itself is not changing. That's the structure I'm asking that question.
So the mass of the building, all the bulk dimensions of it are are the same as it was. It's really just the exterior look of the building that survives. We were trying to address the comments of the H B C. They had commented that it was a very contemporary look on the fourth floor addition that it didn't mesh well with the existing building. We had taken the approach that it's in juxtaposition of the the traditional building, but we revised it to 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 appease the the comments of the board. So that this is our attempt to address those comments.
Is there additional work that's going to be done to the building? Because parts of it are pretty bad shape.
Yeah, the the entire building will be renovated and there there's structural work in the basement that needs to be done. It it will be brought up to code and and everything will be addressed by any deficiencies in the structure, no other tightness of the building, energy efficiency. So it's all being updated.
I can't really tell from that drawing twenty feet away what those materials are. So can you address that?
Sure, so the the ground floor is the existing storefront. We're not changing anything there except the paint color that we're proposing. And those three colors were listed on the the rendering here, say Danville tan. These are all from the Benjamin Moore, the storage collection, Ashley gray and historic black. So the the storefront is remaining as is. If it needs to be refurbished or repaired, we would do that in kind and then repainting it. The existing brick is painted there, so we're just proposing to paint it. Again, this is the Danville tan color with the the window trims, existing trims and detailing want to remain. Just painted the Ashley gray color. These are new fellow windows which we had pulled out on the the previous plans. These are the the fellow historic type windows. On the fourth floor, that is a a Mansard-like roof with the three dormers. And that roof was to address the comments of stepping back the building. So that roof pitches away from the street, kind of less than the extent of that fourth floor. The on the side elevation, that's a board and batted fiber cement siding, a hardy side of board and batten siding on the addition area. And then the existing materials on the first, second, and third floors remain but are painted the Danville tan color.
So the addition on the third and fourth floor is not brick? It's what what did you call it?
It's a a hardy panel, a board and batten siding. On the side elevations.
Okay.
At the rear.
I'm sorry, it's called a hardy.
Hardy plank, hardy plank board?
Panel.
It it it's it's and it's like a ship lap look, right? So it's not just.
It's it's a board and batten look, so they're they're vertical patterns.
Although it's not like a ship lap, okay.
Uh, panels of like sixty to eighteen inches wide.
So instead of stepping back the building as the H B C recommended, you decided to do the Mansard roof? Or did you step it back five feet?
Well, it's still behind the existing cornice and then it begins to tilt backward at three feet.
Second, how could you just add this?
Am I correct? And what you're saying is that the Historic Preservation Committee hasn't really seen this?
I know, this has not gone back to the historic.
They have not seen this.
They didn't, they didn't ask us or require us to.
They haven't seen this.
No, that's correct. The attorney had spoken and said that because the, when an application comes before the planning board or zoning board, the historic commission acts as a as an advisory board. And so they aren't, the applicant isn't required to come back to the H B C. They can take the recommendations or they can leave the recommendation, because their recommendations at that point is advisories. She had went on a whole tangent about it at the meeting.
Well, I guess my only comment that I would be, it's hard to give advice when they don't, when the H B C doesn't see what the, how does, how would the H B C give advice if they don't see what the final product is? It doesn't seem.
Well, they recommended that they change the entire new addition. That was what it was. That's what they recommended. Um, that it didn't fit with the character of the building and that it needed to be changed.
I'd agree they could be here with the original plan.
Right, if they wanted to.
Thanks for the advice.
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
So given that the first three floors today are brick, why did you decide to use a different material?
I think that's a fair question, and it's it's one of the ways that you can, that the Secretary of the Interior kind of recommends historic preservation projects. It's either you you try to, you try to make it look as if it's not part of the original building. You want a clear delineation between what was existing and what is new. You want them to be in concert with each other and work well and create a nice building. But you also don't want to disturb the the fabric of what was there originally. And if anything ever needed to be removed, it's clear what was existing and what is there.
I have never heard of that, but you said that's a Secretary of Interior making a recommendation?
That's the design standards. It's a nationally known standard for historic treating historic sites and doing addition, new additions. It's the Secretary of Interior.
Secretary of Interior, is there, there's, we have guidelines for the H B C, this is it?
Based on it. So the guidelines are there, and it refers to in the ordinance, the Secretary of Interior standards.
Yeah, it's it's news to me. There have never been an application to historic preservation where we've said we want it to look different.
If you're doing a new addition, you have to make it look different from what the original, because you can't recreate when it comes to historic. If it's, if it never existed, you can't recreate recreate it to look like what was there.
There was never a fourth floor.
Yeah, so you can't make it.
Fourth floor.
Right.
It's also a practical matter, because to put brick up there with the weight, the exposure, the elements, the cost, a crazy hardy board. It's like you have on a deck that'll last for a thousand years, but it looks old fashioned. Especially from the street, you know, it's, you just could never do brick there.
Crazy. Okay, any additional questions?
Chair, I have some. Once, um, can you talk about mechanical equipment on the roof, please? Are there any?
Uh, yeah, there would be three outside units for the the three residential tenants. That would be all the roofs. And they would be to the side of that little pilot house, the stair access comes up. So they wouldn't be visible from the street. They're set far off back from the the front edge of the building. They wouldn't be visible from the street. And they wouldn't be visible from any of the adjacent properties to the left or right of the building. To the to the left, the the buildings are lower in elevation and the building to the right would be blocked by that stair access.
Um, and in terms of the height of the building, we had asked for confirmation based off of our ordinance. What is the proposed height?
The proposed height is forty-four feet from the existing brick.
And then you take mean elevations around the building? Give our letter dated October twenty. So, um, page two, one point two. I'm sorry, one point three. If you could provide that. Just so we get an exact height variance, number, what the variance really is for the height.
Speaking of height, how does the height of the proposed building compare to the heights of the buildings on either side?
Uh, it would be about a story taller than the building to the left of it. And then it would be around the same height as the building to the right of it. There's a four-story building to the right of this building.
So the, I I guess the question is, do either of those buildings require height variances next to this proposed addition?
So, yeah.
Well, they would have already gotten it.
No, I know. I'm just trying to compare the height of the two buildings.
I mean, I think it looks like, I mean, this is just Google. You know what I mean? Like, I think it will obviously breach the the sightline of the second building. But the one next to it's four stories, they're just small, lower ceiling heights, I guess. Yeah.
Going downhill.
So it'll be taller than the adjacent building to the right of it, but that's to be expected. You could see that that one's shorter next to it.
Presumably, that's what you wanted, because the Mansard views are the best windows are front and back, but if the windows on the side facing the river, you want them to clear that building next door. I would imagine that's what they're trying to achieve, what the height is, to clear the building next door, which is probably forty feet high, so. How tall the red brick can, whatever it's.
Okay. Any more questions?
I just want to go for calls or reference. And our ordinance for ninety fifty-five uh, H on sorry, as standards, design guidelines and criteria, all project requiring review by the commission and all applications for development in historic districts or on historic historic sites shall be governed by the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, Secretary of Interior Standards for Treatment of Historic Sites with Guidelines for Preserving, Rehabbing, Restoring and Reconstructing Historic Buildings. The guidelines that may be, and the guidelines that may be adopted by ordinance in the future. That's one. And then if you scroll down to seven, Guidelines for New Construction. This chapter does not require or prohibit a particular architectural style. Rather, its purpose is to preserve the past by making the past compatible with the relevant with and relevant to the present. To that end, new construction within a historic district or upon or near a historic property is not required to duplicate an exact historic style, but must be compatible with and not detract from the historic character of the district and affect historic sites.
Yeah, I would probably want to take myself, take a look at that too. And it seemed, that seemed to to me on on your reading to indicate new construction, not necessarily an addition, that the word was the word addition in that.
Addition isn't included, but this technically on top is related to new construction.
Well, I guess that's where I think it's ambiguous. But that's why you're here. If that's the way you want to present it, then that's your choice, you know?
Okay, move on. Any additional questions from the board for this witness? Any questions from the public for this witness? Okay, I guess we move on.
Good evening. If you could just state your name and business address, please?
Justin Osseo, A U C I E, Calano, fifty-two, Breakfast Place, Year Red.
Your address, right?
Blue address. That was the first time on the record, so I'm thinking about it for one second.
So if you just raised your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, so help you God? And for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed professional planner?
Correct.
Thank you.
Could please provide your confidence for the board? Absolutely. I'm a master's in planning for markers. I've been a licensed planner.
They did speak closer to that. Thank you.
Um, I've been a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey since two thousand eight, I've explored on multiple occasions. I've provided testimony and applications like this in most municipalities throughout, from around here in North County and Ocean County and also twenty other fifteen other counties in the state, familiar with the site, familiar with your zoning ordinance and your master plan.
Thank you. Justin, you've reviewed the plans and you've heard the testimony tonight?
I have. Take it away. Okay, so just for ease of reference for the record, I'm going to refer to page two, D and M letter, October twenty-four. I'm just starting with the variance that is required, one point one. Says that the maximum density of twenty-five units per acre in the in the CCD two zone. Whereas the applicant proposes a density of forty-four dwelling units per acre. Um, and I'll just start with that. You know, the ordinance prescribes certain conditions. And one of the conditions is density. So even though a D one use variance is required, this is a bit of a a unique circumstance. I I kind of see it more as a hybrid D two, D three. I I don't want to, you know, money the waters, but I'll just put the proofs on for the D for the D one variance. Uh, the first prong of a D one variance is suitability. Uh, what makes this site particularly suited for this use? As you heard from the testimony this evening, it's an addition on the third, the front floor, so so one additional floor, bringing this building fours. The building as currently situated is mixed use. It's commercial or it was commercial on the first floor of the gallery and two residential uses on floor two and floor three. So when you look at suitability, what's proposed here, the only material difference, and I mean, it is a big difference, but there's a, there's a second story or a fourth story going on in this building. But there's no change in the usage of the built. The use of the of the building will remain the same as it is today, with the exception, of course, of the the additional story on the building. So I think with that said, I think this. So I think with that said, I think this building, uh, where this site still will remain suited for the mixed use nature of the building. Um, I'm gonna talk about the special reasons uh, a bit later, after I go through the proofs of the F A R and the height. Um, but I think in terms of, uh, you know, suitability, I, I think, I think certainly. Um, you know, thi- this is not going to create a discernible difference in, in the, in the traffic, it's not gonna create a discernible difference in the generation. Of uh, of, of school age children, it's really gonna have very little impact but for the introduction of perhaps one or two more um, residents on the street. Uh, in terms of the, the F A R variance. Uh, one point two of the letter states that uh, maximum floor ratio is uh, is one point seven. Whereas the existing is one point six-six. And the applicant proposes uh, two point oh six. Uh, now the F A R standard is a bit different from the D-one standard. The standard is whether or not the site can accommodate uh, the proposed F A R. Um, I think, I think in terms of what's, what's really driving this F A R variance, um, you know, I mean, obviously the F A R is the comparison between the lot area. And square footage, but what's really driving this is that this lot is severely undersized um, for this zone. So the introduction of the additional square footage um, is, it may, may appear to be a significant jump from uh, from one point six-six to two point zero six, but I think it's a practical matter. Uh, as a person standing on the street, uh, looking at this building with the additional story uh, constructed. Um, even though obviously, there's, there's a extra story on it, when you look at it in the context of the surrounding area, the buildings on either side, especially. The building going towards the river, it's not gonna create a situation where the intensity or the massing of the building is going to look out of this. Um, also, as you heard from our engineer, um, the, the drainage uh, that's gonna be generated, um. It will be accommodated, and of course, there's no expansion to the footprint of this building. Um, it, it's not going to encourage, obviously, from the existing setbacks, the front side or rear. So when you look at the intensity or the massing of uh, the proposed story from a. Planning standpoint, I, I think this has been a neat situation. Um, as opposed to other applications that you might have on a bigger lot. This single family hall that someone may posing might look at a place, in this instance, I just don't see it from any standpoint. Um, lastly, uh, the proof, the height is, is the same, same, same type of proof for the F A R, can the site accommodate? Uh, the, the extra, the extra height, as it stated as, as one point three of the letter. Uh, the, the maximum height in the zone is, is forty feet, not to exceed uh, four stories. The applicant proposes a height of uh, forty-four feet. And of course, uh, four stories as well, um, that complies. I think the same argument that I applied for the F A R, um, uh, you know, works here as well in terms of. I always look at height in the, the comparison between this site, the ability for the site to accommodate the height, and also the character of the surrounding area. Um, the height uh, is, is gonna be similar to the, the, the Union Street Village, um. Mixed use development, which is to the north, uh, towards the river, it will be one story higher. At the building, uh, to the left, that you're facing the building, but I think in terms of consistency. Um, again, this is not creating a situation where uh, the extra height is going to, uh, you know, blow out the look. Of the site as it relates to the character of, of the surrounding area. Um, there are multiple pervert, excuse me, there are multiple, um. Uh, special reasons, uh, purposes of zoning that will be advanced with this application. Um, certainly, as you can see, from the rendering from the architect, uh, a, uh, desirable environment. Just purpose I of, of zoning of the M L U L, um, I think, I think the architect. Um, has done a good job to respect the, the, the nature of this building. Complying with the, the Department of, of Interior, um, regulations, which I believe are, are, are codified in the zoning ordinance as well. So I think in terms of the aesthetics of this building, and also, I think importantly as well, the improvement. Uh, of the existing building, uh, to bring it up to code. Uh, and also just to generally clean it up, I think it goes a long way to advance the purpose of zoning. I think the population density is appropriate, that's, that's purpose A, um, I think, you know, even though, of course, um. Variance is required, uh, and, and Kevin, um, just a legal question. I'm not certain, I, I just wanna make sure for the purpose of the record that's correct, is a, a D-five variance, um. Here in this application as well, or is it just the, the D-one which contains the, the conditions for the density? I just wanna be sure for the record. Yeah, uh, Jackie, what did we say, D-one?
I think it's just D-one.
It was the D-one, yeah.
Okay, so, um, so even though a, uh, you know, D-five variance. And let me just, I, I think. It's a nuanced ordinance, but I think the conditions require certain densities and certain F A Rs, and, and because you're not meeting them all. You then need a, a, a D-one, but it's, it's nuanced, but I think that's, that's the answer. Okay, thank you. Um, so, so in terms of density, I, I think the reasons I, I had stated for, for the, for the proof. Um, you know, for the D-one, which contains the condition and one of which is density. Um, I think certainly in the context of this site and the surrounding area, proposed density, um, really fits within the character of the area. Uh, and certainly, uh, purpose J, uh, as you heard from our architect, and obviously, we're just aware of this application has been to the H B C. Uh, the, um, nature of the site being historic, again. I, at your planning standpoint, is creating a situation that is respectful to that heritage as well. Which your master plan also speaks about, the need to protect the, the historic nature of buildings in the borough. Um, so I think, uh, you know, those purposes of zoning, um, would be advanced, um, by this application. In terms of, of the negative criteria, in terms of whether or not the proposed variances will present a substantial detriment to the public good. I think the applicant, through the previous witnesses, um, have established that. There's really not, not much in the way of a negative impact, um, certainly, uh, no impacts which brought to the level being, uh. Substantial, uh, no, no negative impact, uh, you know, to the drainage, uh, the massing, as you heard from the architect. Uh, will remain the same. Um, also, one thing that I didn't touch on is the parking variance. Um, as you heard from, from the previous witness, uh, we were deficient, uh, one spot. Um, two, two will be required, uh, for the residential use, one will be provided, so deficiency with new deficiency on the site is one. Um, the applicant, um, will, um, find the spot to accommodate, um, that extra spots that. That's required, I just wanna say for the record, my office, uh, did reach out to the parking utility, we did, we did speak with someone, uh, late last week. And what we were told, that they were gonna get back to us, uh, you know, as to the, the ability to get a, a parking permit, but we were told that that had been done in the past. Um, and we were also told that one spot, uh, would be available as well. So if that's the case, we, we would be able to, or the applicant would be able to acquire that parking permit, obviously, should it be available into the future. Be that as it may, uh, the applicant is willing, um, you know, to, to acquire, uh, the. Probably to satisfy, uh, the spot to acquire, also, I think importantly as well, as you heard from our, from our engineer. There is sufficient parking, on, onsite parking in the surrounding area, um, that, that would be, would be, um, useful to, to accommodate. Um, the parking demand on the side and also the parking demand, they need guests, um, to, uh, the new apartment as well. Um, so in terms of, of the negative criteria, certainly, for all those reasons, uh, no substantial detriment. In terms of the impact to the, the zone plan, the zoning ordinance. Um, again, because of that quirk in the, uh, in the code, in terms of requiring a, a D-one use variance, as I had previously said. Given that the mixed use nature of this site, and the proposed mixed use nature, the only difference obviously being the additional story and the apartment unit. Um, I don't see this as a use which would, uh, fracture the intent, uh, to the zoning ordinance and, and, and the zoning plan. I think there are, uh, ample justifications for the variance relief, um, that, that's required as for my testimony. Uh, and I feel that, um, the advancement of the master plan, the zone plan and the zoning ordinance, uh, would be met, um, with this application.
Thank you. Question?
Um, I'm not sure if it's a proper question for you, but we didn't really talk about the roof terrace, um. Did we wanna talk about that?
Well, I was gonna bring that up also with Chris's information, the building, top of building is forty-four feet, but the top of the stair access is fifty feet, so I don't know. Like, to the top of the, the top top of the building, it's fifty, not forty-four, and do we consider that stair access part of the height requirement?
Yeah, I was thinking that as well, and then what other buildings in the area have a roof terrace?
Um, you know what, I'm, I'm, I'm not certain, uh, I, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure, so, uh, I'd have to get that to you on that.
Okay.
Kessler, are you familiar with any buildings in the area that have a roof terrace?
I think the, uh, tattoo shop on Front Street. I think the tattoo shop on Front Street has a roof terrace in the back of that. Not sure exactly of others.
How many stories is that?
Two.
I mean, Red Rock has how many roof terraces, you know, I'm just saying.
Oh, like a good roof terrace person.
No, I, I, just that seventy. I was just saying, like, if that includes the, you know, the, the height of the building as the stair entrance.
Well, that one, okay. You know what, and let me.
Can our engineer, is our engineer be able to address that, like, in other words? The staircase, is that counted in the height of the building?
Uh, it's okay.
There's signs that put in four feet, ten feet.
I thought, yeah, is it four feet over, or is it ten feet?
Because of the staircase.
Um, not applied to that enclosure for the staircase, so.
I would say they're allowed to build a fire support, you know what I mean, like, they need fireworks. Stair of towers, so stair towers are included, so the height limitation created here under shall apply to chimneys, ventilators. Skylights, tanks, stair, stair towers, fly towers, elevation towers, apparatus. Usually carried above the roof level and non-commercial radio and television antennas attached to a structure. Except that the same may exceed. Said height limitation by no, not more than fifteen feet. Or in the case of fly towers, twenty feet. Except that skylights, heating and air conditioning equipment and ventilators may exceed a height limitation by no more than ten feet. Such features shall not exceed in total coverage, ten percent of the total area.
So it's included, yeah.
I'm here to hear is ten.
It's exempt.
I'm just sixty. It gets in, it's in the height.
Lower, it's not, not sixty.
Right, because that is the, cause you're. It's, uh, but.
The stair tower.
So where's the?
Applies to the height.
So they have, you're talking about the stair tower, correct?
Yeah, the stair tower on top of.
Here. Stair tower is included with the height, when you measure the height.
Right, and, but the variance was for how high?
Um, so they're requesting a variance for forty-four, but it should be for fifty.
But they still need a height variant, they, they still need a D-six.
Is, is that because of the terrace?
It's, it's.
The stairs going that high because of the rooftop terrace that they have?
Yes.
No, I think it's because of the staircase, uh, the stair tower, the stair tower, that's what triggers, because they still need a D-one, D-six variance, it's not a regular. Height variance, it's a D-six.
No, but I think to raise question, if they didn't have the terrace, they wouldn't require the stairs, right, the terrace.
That was my question.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, don't you still need a stairhead like that on the roof in a modern edition with this?
Oh, you need it, but it's just whether, should ask for forty-four, fifty instead of forty-four, let's get it right, like.
Right, right, same if we remove the terrace, they still need.
They still need one anyway, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, no, it's fifty that, not?
It's fifty, it's fifty, not forty-four.
Forty-four.
Given that, um, you can have our architect testify as it relates to, do you hear? Yeah, the mic's not picking you up.
What'd you say?
I got the thumbs up. Um, I'll have our architect come up and just testify as it relates to the height of that area. Specifically, patient, we can count the impact potential visuals, and then I'll just come up and just. Supplement his testimony with that.
Four ninety dash thirteen.
And so, Dan, you heard, you heard what was discussed, can you please describe the area in question?
So the, uh, the stair access. occurs in, in the middle of the building, if you're looking at from the front to the rear, it's set back, uh. I don't have the dimension in front of me, but it's at least twenty-five feet from the, the face of the building. And it, we minimized that stair access as much as we could. Um, it's actually a. Upper patch, as opposed to a full, like, pilot house, which would be more like eight to ten feet, this is only six feet above the top of the roof. Will not be visible from the street. Um, it's set back far enough that if you're on the sidewalk across the street. You would feel the second, yeah, stair access. And, uh, we, we really did try to minimize that, uh. The size of it as much as we could and located it away from the, the front of the building.
Wait, so it's, it's on a slant, it looks like you said it's a hatch, you're not walking out the.
No, it's, it's not all, uh, it's not a, a full door.
It's not a full door this way, you're just.
Like window hatch that you stuck.
Up and.
Up and out onto.
You kind of lift it up and then walk out.
And that would be available to all the apartments in the building?
That's for the, uh, the top floor.
Penthouse.
Oh, just the one, okay.
The penthouse.
They have to walk up.
Wait, the hatch is, is available for everyone there?
Oh, just the penthouse.
No.
Oh, just.
I thought it was where the mechanicals are, so it's gonna be used by the penthouse residents.
Right, only, only the rear of the, of the building is used as a roof terrace. Where would the mechanicals be?
That's a downstairs, that's downstairs, this is up. So in through here and then up. There's the up and there's the hatch. Then you can only go to this area.
Do you wanna get to it from?
You can only get to it from the fourth floor.
But, uh, if you look at the, the roof plan here on the right page, the shaded area of the building.
So you have to.
Where the roof terrace occurs.
Roof, okay.
And the, uh, the structure just to the south of that, south of that, uh, on the right-hand side of the page. That's the stair tower coming up, the, the hatch out to the roof terrace. The mechanical equipment would be, uh, behind the, uh, the stair access.
How tall is that railing that's there?
Uh, it would be three foot, or three foot six.
Can I just, the same ordinance that I read. Um, they're allowed, they're allowed fifteen feet. For that stair, the stairs, they're at six.
So they don't need a variance for.
It's still part of, it's considered part of the height. But they're allowed up to fifteen feet. Except that same may exceed said height limitation by not more than fifteen feet.
That's if they meet the height requirement.
So it's part, when you have a height limitation, right, it's under height limitation, so you add you. It's part of the height that you're.
Right, so if they meet, if they meet the height limitation, then they're allowed fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet, yeah.
In this case, they don't meet the height.
But if you meet it, then you could be fifty-five feet wide.
Well, they could have, they could have the fifteen feet if it was.
Yeah, right, but it could be fifty-five, you could, it could be fifty-five feet wide. Um, the mechanical is gonna be next to the staircase, that means it's gonna be next to the adjacent building, on the adjacent building side.
I think it's ten feet off, and I think that's what they need, ten feet off the side of the.
Ten feet off the side of the building, yeah. I think it's the, um, deck space. Square feet.
Twenty-six by seventeen, plus a little more.
Yes.
Thirty-three by eighteen.
Nice space, yeah. It's in the back.
I'm sorry, what was it, the rooftop deck is what?
Twenty-five by eighteen. Twenty-five feet by eighteen feet.
And plus a little, yeah.
That's not enclosed?
No, it's not enclosed.
And is there, it's not covered?
No.
Did you say that the mechanicals, I thought you said the mechanicals are behind the staircase? Uh, that would be on the roof terrace?
We we show them on the plan just uh.
Just in front of.
But uh, we could locate them to the left of the stair so that it's not visible to the, you know, to the right.
Well, with the shroud of the staircase, you wouldn't see it anyway, right? When you're walking up the stair, you wouldn't see it and you wouldn't have access to it either.
You're walking up.
The way you're loo, the way you walk up the stairs, you would never even get over there.
To see that from the street as well, right?
No, it's it's kept far enough away from the front of the building that units are no more than uh, three or four feet tall.
Another question, now the 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 drawings show the building, existing building is thirty eight feet. Is what it shows, so. If you you need, you need a variance to build an addition, it's impossible to change the building. If if you restore the existing building, which may be.
We're working with the existing.
To add to it.
Finish floor levels for the.
There isn't enough room left.
Correct.
Without going over the forty.
And that, sorry, I I I'm just a couple more. Um, if I'm standing on the roof and I'm like looking towards the river. Um, so I've got Union Village Apartments to the right. And they have Romeo and Juliet balconies. Are you familiar with those?
Uh, I'm familiar with the the balcony. I'm not familiar with the building later.
Okay, so if I'm staring at the front of your building, the building to the right, Union Square Village, I think is the name of it. That building is also four stories. This, your building's gonna be a little bit taller than that, right? And um, that building to the right of your building has balconies on that side that abut your building. And I wanna know if I'm standing on the roof of your of your new roof deck. The view, is there any invasion of privacy issues for the tenants in that building?
Oh, can these people look down?
Does that make sense though?
Yeah, I I couldn't say for.
Yeah, photograph. Currently, you have no windows on the right hand side of your building. But there's balconies on the Union Square Building. So if you're on the roof, I wanna know, can you look into those apartments? You have a view into inside of those apartments?
Yeah, I couldn't say for sure.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one more quick. Uh, it was a quick, it was a mention of the absence of a handicap space in this tiny parking lot in the back. Uh, dude, is there a variance required for that? I mean, this is a small you building. I wouldn't know, you know, would you have to have a handicap space for a building that's small? Or, so my question is really, i- is there a need for a variance for that lack? Or not?
They can't hear me from here, if I hear the.
All right, just for the record, Christopher Morris, you're still under.
Yes, uh, uh, handicap spot would be required, um, so a variance would be required for the retail component.
Thank you.
All right. In the area, in the general area. And a clear accessible path to the site.
Uh, it just seems to me, maybe you ought to ask for and get that variance as well.
Yes.
That was, that variance was mentioned in T and M's letter. I think it was point, uh, three point two. One band space is required.
But Shawna, can, just out of curiosity, can they say they're gonna have a space, ADA space offsite? You can say that?
You can, I mean.
You don't control it?
Similar to Red Rock?
Right, it's similar to Red Rock.
Situation, um, where they were using the handicap space, the diagonal spaces on the other side of, is that worst still?
Next to the park.
Yep.
Next to the park, um, and they were required to, as much as feasible, create a handicap path to their building.
Right. We can identify that on the plans too.
What's the purpose, though, of having handicap like across the what, you know what I mean? The purpose of it is to have it so it's accessible to the building easier for somebody with handicap than walking. You know, I you said something about offsite. How does that even, how is that legal to be an ADA spot like offsite? Because it's a public, it's a public spot, it's not. What's the handicap benefit though, being far away, you know, away from? It's a, it's across the road.
Could one of the spots that they have now be designated exclusively for ADI? You're getting a parking variance.
Just eliminate two spots. Here, so they have three spaces. One accessible, have to have the access aisle, so you'd only have one ADA spot and one regular spot out of the three spots.
I see Arlene's point about who cares if there's a handicap spot across the street, you know, like if it's a person, you know, living there, you know?
But also, we have to remember that the commercial space is pre-existing.
That's for the commercial space, so.
Yeah, that's only for the commercial space, not for the residential portion.
So zero spots right now are for the residents?
Zero ADA spaces.
They're not required, you're saying, they're not required for the.
There's no elevator in the building. Oh, it's kind of.
So they're further retail now, but they will be converted for residential space, so the retail won't have anymore?
They're not even straight spots or nothing.
Just because they don't exist now doesn't mean they won't exist, you know, like, so I'm wondering, could we make allowances for an ADA person to have a spot in the space?
For a pre-existing commercial space that, had they not done this application? They wouldn't have needed, I mean.
They wouldn't have needed one anyway.
The person would have used the ADA spots where it is now. It's just the creation of the new residential portion. The units are ADA, correct? They're not fitted to be ADA.
All this stuff is gonna create and, you know, issues for somebody looking to rent in this building. If there aren't enough spaces, not any handicap, you know, that's something they have to deal with, so. Okay, any additional questions, so we can move this along?
I have a question for the um, the planner, so he could come up. I was trying to follow your um, argument on the suitability of the or the required density, the increased density of the building. And you actually said it was a character of the area. Do you know the density of the buildings surrounding this building?
That's a good question. Um, yeah, I did the calculation for for Union Street Village, that's a correct, Union Street Village. I was gonna say square, but it's Union Street Village. Um, the density of that building is is lower than but I preface that by saying that this this lot on on this side, the applicant side, is severely undersized. So, so any increase in in floor area is gonna create the appearance of a density um, that may appear to be substantial.
What's the current density as it stands today?
I I have that outside. On the current, uh. Um, I do have the current density in my notes here, just need to find it. On the plan too. Sorry, to just bear with me, sir, um. Proposed density, of course, is uh, forty four point one two. Oh, okay, uh, twenty nine from four one. Is the current density, uh, which is calculation of a point zero six eight C uh, by two units, that's at twenty nine point, twenty nine point four one, which we are playing. So by my calculation, it's uh, twenty nine point four one.
So the current is twenty nine with the proposed addition, it becomes forty four.
Forty four point one two.
So the current uh, use of the building, the existing use of the building is already slightly over the allowed density.
Slightly.
Yeah.
And 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 really, I, I think as I said in in my testimony, um, I'm really seeing it in the context, not just the site, but the character of the area. And even though the density adjacent building, uh, you uh, Union Street Village uh, is lower than the proposed density, that's on a much, much greater sized lot. Uh, there are more units in that building, believe there are eight residential units in that building versus the number of units in this building. So, uh, that 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 actually, you know, from someone who doesn't know land use, if they're looking on the street, on Union Street and looking at that adjacent building, they may think, or I guess, you know, visually, you would discern that that could be denser in your mind. But when you look on this property, uh, it's not gonna have that kind of mass in character, just because this is a narrow lot, um, you know, undersized lot. And the addition of that extra story is gonna be consistent with the character of the adjacent building, which may appear larger, but actually has a slightly lower density.
Okay, I have to, so any further questions for any of these witnesses? Any questions from the public for any of these witnesses? Okay, we'll close that part. You wanna say your final piece here?
Uh, so I would like to state that that we are seeing the board's approval tonight for a few variances, density, um, parking and height. And it would be the adjacent. Use, um, but as you've heard from all of our professionals, it it seems that this type of use and proposed improvements um, aren't gonna be a detriment to the area of anything that's gonna be a a nice positive and hope that the board acts favorably tonight.
Hey. Well, one thing I do want to say is that I'm surprised that we didn't get an updated set of plans for this building. And what we have is not what you're looking to do, so, I mean, appearance wise, uh, but being that, I think we're here to approve or not approve the the concept of what you wanna do is add that additional uh, apartment on on the second, on the fourth floor, so. Anybody like to make a motion to approve or deny this application?
Could I just ask for clarification on the parking and the Red Bank, you know, permits or whatever? So what's the current proposal? Is that you would get, you would acquire?
Have to acquire, um, secure parking permits for the efficient spaces that.
Two additional spaces?
One additional space. It would be three.
Two.
Two. So three, we have three residential here and then.
So you would, you would acquire two additional parking permits from the mi- municipality of Red Bank if you can? Three, not two.
But we can't base our decision on it because it's an unknown whether or not they even can, right? Like, the attempt is there. Yeah, but it's, there's no guarantee that those spaces will become available to the, to the project. Like, there's a, there'll be an attempt.
Well, no, is it?
You know, they don't have the parking, it it's tough for somebody wanna rent an apartment where they don't park. So, you know, that's up to them to try and. So, anybody wanna make a motion?
Yes, I I will make a motion to approve this uh, project. I think it will add a housing unit, which is always nice. It's attractive, um, fits the area. Um, and I'm not gonna let my irritation that we didn't have the right plans get in the way of that. So that's out there. Thanks.
You know, I've I've written down some.
Yes, why don't you come in?
All right, so we have a couple things that we'll need some clarification on, so let's just, uh, the regular standard conditions would include compliance with all the promises, commitments and representations the team made tonight. Uh, compliance with the T and M Associates Review Memorandum. We usually have a twenty four month timeframe, uh, shelf life within which building permits are to be obtained. Um, a compliance with all affordable housing rules, regulations, contributions and directives. And Shawna just points that end, is there any, uh, I mean, are they supposed to go to uh, affordable housing compliance beforehand, or?
They're under ten units, so they're not required.
Okay, so then they just have to comply with the regulations, compliance with applicable outside approvals. And uh, if the application or the requested relief materially changes as a result of those outside approvals, uh, you'd need to come back to the board, petition the board for further amended relief. We have a uh, requirement that, um, if the application is approved, you will, uh, prior to CO, you'll need to submit uh, engineering certification from uh, your professionals and architects confirming that the improvement was uh, built and installed in accordance with the approved plans, in accordance with the testimony and in accordance with the uh, resolution. Shawna, we wouldn't need any type of developer's agreement on on this. Um, and we have uh, grading and drainage details, if necessary, to be reviewed and approved by the board engineer. Uh, Jackie, your memo had made reference to offsite water vulnerability contributions, uh, and then um, it is private garbage compliance with ADA regulations. Um, typically in youth variant situations, we say that you'll get more, um, uh, or you would agree to more frequent uh, private pickup, garbage pickup if your client deems it necessary or an agent of the borough deems it necessary because it's a non-compliant nature. Um, and then uh, just real quickly, uh, it it Jackie's memo had made some something for an access easement for lot twenty for parking. Does that still maintain? Is that still arrangement, still? I think, uh, Jackie, unless I misread it, was there something in your review letter about an access easement uh, with for parking for adjacent lot twenty? It was towards the end. I just wanna make sure I'm not.
Uh, yeah, the applicant shall provide copies of any deep directions or easements on site. It would appear that a access easement across lot twenty may exist for exist, for access to the area.
All right, so you'll you'll get us a proof of that, um, fire official to review, uh, for the emergency access. Um, and then some of the things we talked about tonight now, um, we talked about the HPC.
For that, um, since the board, um, seems a little uncomfortable with the HBC not seeing the finals. Um, I would recu- recommend that the um, commission make a condition that the HPC sees this rendering. Um, and the proposed new renderings and should they have any changes? Um, would the applicant be okay with complying with what their recommendations are with regards to the siding, um, color of the windows or whatever? Is that something that the applicant would be?
For their review and approval.
And we continue.
Yep, just speaking to the mic.
So I was able to confirm with my client that they actually do have already secured, they've already secured two placards for parking. And they, uh, my client actually owns a separate parking lot in the area, so in the event they needed to provide additional parking spaces, they can accommodate that. So, um, I know there's some questions about permits, um, we were able to.
In Red Bank area, like in right in town, he has an extra parking lot, not not. In Red Bank area, like in right in town, he has an extra parking lot, not not taking an Uber to the apartment, okay? Okay.
Shauna, extremely, extremely quick to that HPC point. Since. They're technically not required.
Right.
And there's no approval function of the HPC. Would you, would you be concerned about the precedent? That's all I'm asking. I I I think the new, the new building looks, looks good.
The board, if they would want that, um, I can understand the precedent, but it could be by a case-by-case basis.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it as a case-by-case basis, I'm just worried about.
The precedent.
And like, that game uses leverage.
I'm okay with a good faith effort, you know?
I mean, they showed a good faith effort with the new design, I thought.
Okay, and then we're gonna, uh, there's gonna be striping identification and signage for the, uh, parking. Um. And, uh, the ADA space arrangements. Um, let's see. Uh, downspouts on the plans. Um, private hauler, we talked about. Um. Attempting to get those parking permits, so that that's been changed, you have two. Um, and then we have the third arrangement, uh, for the private parking arrangement that your client owns. Uh, it's rental apartments. We talked about, um. Uh, that was the HPC comments. Um, I guess in just in terms of construction stage, and we just have a general, you you work and consult with. The municipality and the police department to minimize disturbance. Um, now we're, we're saying that the building height is fifty feet. Okay, and we're gonna, you'll just, uh, confirm that. And we're also going to have. Um. Let's see, with the, uh. Height, and I guess we should just clarify, if this is the intention, it's just for that staircase and you can't expand. The rest of the building to fifty feet. That's not, it's not a blanket fifty foot, it's just for that staircase. And. Let's see, uh. Given the devariance relief, no, usually you have a requirement, no further expansion or intensification, absent further formal approval, the board. Compliance with, um, the, uh, building and construction code requirements. Now Dante, at the end, I think, uh, your architect said something, they could locate the air conditioning rooftop to the, and he said one direction. Is that, uh, condition, Shauna, that we requiring that the, um, I think you said so, your architect says it wouldn't be in the way of the. Roof deck, is that something that we're doing or not doing?
I mean, it would help to Paul's point of blocking people from getting over into those Juliet. Balcony, so.
So we're gonna locate the air conditioning rooftops, uh, to the right, to the left, or to the east?
Leaving it where it is, again.
Leave it where it is? Leave, okay. And we are going to, um. Um. Again, with that ADA arrangement, you're gonna have to comply with ADA regulations, and to the extent ADA regulations require, you're gonna have to create. Um, a, a path as much as feasible and practical to the building, and you're gonna have to put that on the plans. And. Let's see, um. We have the, uh, space about the, you have the two parking spaces, and you're gonna make the permits and then make, uh, grant one. Uh, tenant. Access in your clients, Union Street Village, and obviously, that's a perpetual arrangement. But I think that's the gist. And our other standard conditions, Dante, before the board discusses it, are you and your client okay with those, uh, conditions?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So, sorry, Mr. Chairman, a little bit longer than I wanted.
Yes.
Based on Mr. Kennedy's.
And Tori.
Yes.
Raymond Mas.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Dan Uro.
Yes.
Karen Lee. Vincent Light.
Yes.
Paul Cagner.
Uh, no. All right, so that's six yes, one no, uh, application passes. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board, you for your time today.
Thank you.
Motion through, John. Motion, please.